That was the original.
All right, welcome to the February twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, Briar City Council meeting. Start with roll call, Councilmember Nick.
Here.
Councilmember Lockhart.
Here.
Councilmember Rosman.
Here.
Councilmember Crinkie.
Here.
Councilmember Moran.
I'm here.
Councilmember Marley.
Here.
And Councilmember Gallagher. All right, welcome everyone. Let's move on to the public requests and oral communications portion of the meeting. This is when citizens can address the council and myself with questions or comments they might have. Just raise your hand, please. One more time, this is the public requests and oral communication portion of the meeting. Those that would like to address the council or myself with questions or comments, please raise your hand. You see any Paula?
Not a thing. You're moving on.
All right, move on to approval of minutes. I've entertained a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion to approve of Briar City.
You forgot reports of committees and city officials.
Oops, sorry.
Sorry, that was my fault. Reports of cities and city officials. Meetings to report.
We had a parks board meeting the week before last. Not much to report unless I'm missing something, Paula.
No. Most of their concerns with anything have all been addressed by Steve.
Okay.
Apparently had a premonition. We were leaning toward having more normalcy for the Easter egg hunt. And then running the heels of that, we got the announcement that we are going to cease some normalcy. So that's good.
And the the new swing, the swing that you guys authorized last fall is in place now. The one that's for in Briar Park for special needs kids. Any, I know we have some other meetings to report.
Yeah, on the on the fifteen, we had branding meeting, meeting last on the fifteenth Tuesday.
And Martin was there, Bow was there.
Yep.
And we had the planning commission meeting on the sixteenth of February.
Right. And did checks today. Okay, anybody else?
I observed the Stonewall County Planning Commission meeting today. It was brief, followed by Oakmont training, so I did not stay for the whole thing.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on, now we can approve minutes.
I'm going to make that motion again to approve a Briar City Council minutes of February eighth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, motion, motion by Nick, second by Gallagher. Any discussion of the motion? All of the most thing about me saying aye.
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 You post a nay, and the motion passes.
And Mr. Mayor, I would move approval for our city council workshop minutes of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Gallagher, second by Lockhart. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing that all, they were seeing the motions, saying aye.
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 And you post a nay, and the motion passes. Moving on to consent agenda, these are items, two items. And B that we have discussed before in workshop meetings. And that entertain a motion.
Sir Mayor moved to approve the agreement with Pace Engineers proposal for the home drive pedestrian bridge and amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Second.
Motion by Marley, second by Rosman. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing that all, fair the motions signal, I've been saying aye.
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 You post a nay, and the motion passes. All right, item B.
I moved to authorize the purchase of fuel. I'm guessing there should be an F in there. Purchase the fuel from the state contract with with World Connect in the amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Second, motion by Lockhart, second by Crinky. Purchase fuel for the city. Any discussion of the motion?
Um, I'm glad that we're moving on this now because it'd be very smart of us.
Yes.
I don't think.
Your your Russian futures are not looking so good right now.
Not good at all.
May I ask, may I ask a question about the the forty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
I I looked at the budget for twenty twenty-one and tracking law law enforcement expenses, parks, fuel expenses, road, street vehicle expenses, repair and maintenance vehicle expenses. Our fiscal number for the year was eight thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars against the budget of eighteen thousand, one, eight, zero, zero, zero. So forty thousand dollars is a sum of money or gas which would last us, what, up to four years? Is that how we normally purchase purchase fuel? We spent eight and a half thousand this year. Forty thousand seems to be pretty large volume of fuel.
That was only a partial fill-up. When we did that last one.
The eighty thousand, eight thousand.
Mm-hmm. And this, this is a full fill.
We've done twenty plus thousand. I want to say the one before that was twenty twenty-four thousand. I could be wrong on that, but.
Yeah, something like.
And prices are higher than they were.
Much, much higher.
They're at an all time high.
Yeah.
You still have the tank today versus half the tank tomorrow.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is, this is a, yeah, this is the most significant purchase of fuel. The prices have gone up and the volume has up.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they may have gone up since Steve submitted this. That's why we rounded it to forty thousand as to cover.
Yeah.
Crude crude oil was up again today.
Yeah. Well, again, I was just marketing back to Martin's thought last week of of sort of dollar cost averaging these purchases maybe over a longer period of time.
Well, this, I mean, honestly, this is kind of our dollar cost averaging. We just do it over. A lot of times it's bird in the hand at that moment. Yeah.
We we've been way below budget last few years, so.
Yeah, there's a, there's a good chance that that could last us as long as two years or not, because you know, last year we didn't, we ran, we ran without a full complement of police officers to keep our police cars on the roads twenty-four seven, so.
We'll get them electric vehicles.
We appreciate the fiscal responsibility, though, Don, because that's what we're.
It's a good, it's a good question.
Yep, okay.
All right, any other discussion of the motion? Hearing that all, fair the motions, signify by saying aye.
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 And you post a nay, and the motion passes. Moving on to hearings, tonight we do have a public hearing. Like to open the public hearing at seven oh eight. This public hearing is for ordinance four, seven, eight point A, amending the home occupation business license regulations in chapter seventeen point one two. Tonight, we have our planner Jennifer with us. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everyone agree?
Yes, we can. Why don't you remind us, we've been through this a couple of times. We've made some minor changes. Just kind of bring us up to speed, please.
Sure. So these changes were made after we adopted ordinance four seventy-eight back in November. The reason for these is that upon further reflection, staff felt that it would be beneficial to applicants as well as as staff reviewing applications for home, home occupation business licenses to have the references to other sections of the code that may be triggered by their application be directly within this section. So the majority of the changes that are outlined in the staff report and that are in the red line of exhibit A that you were provided with relate to that, adding those other references. A couple of the other things that we added was we moved the notice and public hearing procedures directly into this section. Previously, there had been a reference in another portion of the code, and there were a couple of conflicts, the language there and other house, minor housekeeping updates in the section such as changing the wording to indicate that home occupation business licenses are allowed in zones where residences are allowed rather than just use the term residential zones because they have been allowed in the neighborhood business zone for a number of years. So there was a planning commission hearing last week on this. There were no members of the public at the meeting, but the commissioners made a few recommendations that are outlined in your staff report. These are primarily wording and references to other portions of the code to help clarify the language. Probably the the most significant one was in seventeen twelve, zero, six, zero. This is the section that pertains to when public hearings are required and indicating that those would be required when the trips exceed, for example, when trips exceed the number of trips allowed in the existing performance criteria. And when machinery exceeds the allowed types in the performance criteria. So the planning commission made a recommendation to approve the ordinance and staff would recommend that council do the same.
Any questions for Jennifer?
Yeah, I I had a question around line, oh, Martin's trying to talk as well.
Now mute, Martin.
I I just had a procedural question whether we are to do the public hearing first before we have council discussion.
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you, Martin. So any, anybody that would like to, from the public that would like to in in this public hearing portion of the meeting.
So you're opening the public hearing?
Yeah, I opened it already, and I just got to allow comment. So if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on this during this public hearing with respect to this ordinance, now would be a good time to raise your hand. One more time, this is the public hearing portion. Where public can address this ordinance, questions or comments or pros or cons. See, okay, we have one hand there. Wow. All right, Bill.
Hi, this is Bill Bardick from thirty-four seventeen, two twenty-seven Street Southwest. Just wanted to comment, we were in attendance for that planning commission meeting, and it seems like the changes are a good direction, so I don't see any issues with approving the ordinance.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Questions or comments from the public? I don't see any more hands. Do you, Paula?
No.
Okay, back to the council. Questions for Jennifer from the council?
So so I did have a question.
Close here.
Two, two ten to two fourteen. And this has to do with the, an application has been denied. And it states that they could reapply within the six month timeframe. Let's see, if the applicant demonstrates that changed conditions on the subject property or surrounding property justify the reapplication. And I wanted a little bit of clarity around what constitutes a changed condition. You know, because it specifies on the subject property or surrounding property, but if a, if an application, for example, was denied because it didn't meet one of the criteria and the, there's a change made to meet the criteria, would that constitute a a change that could fit within the six month window?
Um, that is an excellent question. This was language provided by the attorney, and I don't think we had had much discussion regarding what a change condition might be there.
Yes, I believe that would be the changed condition.
Okay, so if they were to update their application, they could resubmit.
Right.
Okay. Would be worthwhile to clarify that.
I think that if, should the should it arise? Because how it has already happened is that the person has reached out and contacted Carrie, and Carrie looks at the changes and says, sure, you can, you know, this can move forward and everything.
Okay. Okay.
We saw. I eat fruit stand, right?
Correct.
Could be an example.
That was the example.
I know.
Mr. Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Gallagher, did you have?
Are we still in the hearing?
I guess, no.
We, we haven't closed it yet. That's the issue.
Yeah, okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing at seven fifteen. Comment, Mr. Gallagher, anything?
No, that was what it was.
Okay. And well, then you need to, let's, we put the thing on a motion, and then we can have a discussion.
Yeah, right.
So you'll have to restate all your questions, David.
Well, I I think I think we can ask clarifying questions prior to the motion, then the motion can be made and.
Well, that's fair, that's fair.
Motion and then discuss the motion itself.
That's fair, yes.
Yeah, so so given that bear with me here, I guess I shall move to approve ordinance number four seven. I've got the type two small here.
Four seventy-eight A.
Or seventy-eight A. And that'd be amending the home occupation business license regulations in chapter seventeen twelve.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second, we have a motion by Marley, second by Gallagher. Any discussion of the motion?
Yeah, so I did have one question on the uh, let's see, one, it's in the planning commission recommendations, the revised read that was C of the twelve, zero, six, zero, lines one fifty-five to one sixty, said manufacturing with machinery that does not, so these were the things that would create think go to a public hearing if I had that right. It said manufacturing, yeah, go ahead.
These are things that would not go to public hearing. So the cut, like, for example, manufacturing that does not meet the requirements of criteria number eight would go to a public hearing.
Right, that, that's, okay, that's where I was going. But but the the question I had is when I look at what it says for machinery, it's pretty, that's even kind of nebulous. It just says noise. But, I mean, to be honest, if somebody had a table saw inside a shop that didn't make, I mean, how do you make that determination? Just at the application time. I mean, noise, I would assume, you know, that's, I guess I wasn't quite clear on that. And I realized that we were a little ambiguous before, too, so. But since that was something they were clarifying, I was are we sufficiently clarifying something with that one? That was just kind of what I was trying to figure out.
I know that in the past, when we've had things like that, that we had concerns with, when Eric has gone out to do his you know.
Right.
Walk through, he has asked to have machinery turned on, you know, with their garage door shut or whatever, just so that he could gauge it for himself before coming back and saying, yeah, that's not a big deal.
All right, so, okay, so it's right now generally a subjective best the inspector can determine.
Right.
I'm not saying that's.
Falls under number four, the request additional information, you know, during the review of the application process.
Okay, okay.
What exactly those, but it is that subjective.
Okay, I wasn't saying that was a bad thing. I just, I wasn't clear how would our practice has been on that because, you know, wasn't real clear. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Jennifer, I have a question on lines forty-four through fifty-four, the amendment there relevant to home agricultural business. And we expanded the exterior component to fifty percent of the lot size. And understand, is that fifty percent then taking into account the need for parking space onsite for delivery vehicles, vans that the business might need for delivering its products or receiving its products? Or is that space just for the the agriculture itself? If I see parking out on our public easements off 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 property there in in the 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 grass areas, the that are again part of our our parkway, is that considered to be part of the the fifty percent of the the lot size space that's allowable per business license?
There needs to be improved parking spaces provided for for customers coming to the property. And my interpretation, and you know, since this is brand new language and has never come up, is that that would be part of the fifty percent. That, you know, any, any activities that are associated with the business that are occurring on property should be part of that fifty percent, whether it's in you know, planting bed or a compost bin or a parking spot.
Delivery, delivery vehicles owned by the business, should they be retained on that, on the, on the property, or are they allowed to be used and parked outside the property line? Maybe that's a technicality I can, we can revisit.
Well, people can have, I mean, they're set aside agricultural, people will have businesses that may have their business truck and stuff.
Right.
That would be this, you know, I think a similar scenario, and more likely scenario, to be honest on that.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? We have a motion in a second.
All right, I also, I just wanted to go back to ninety, lines ninety-six through ninety-nine, criteria number ten, may address your questions in part. Where parking for trailers and work vehicles need to be.
Yeah, okay, great.
And I would say all of those elements would be included in the fifty percent.
Yeah, okay.
That's my interpretation if council wants to provide some language that.
You know, it's interesting, when we discussed it originally, we didn't really specify in that, that I recall in that conversation. So it's a good point. We were kind of accounting for in the agricultural, right? Somebody needs enough for their garden and space and and stuff. So that was where we were trying to be somewhat accommodating on that, but it's a, it's a good point. Unless anybody else recalls us talking about it, and I don't remember us talking about that one.
I don't think there was a specific discussion issue.
Yeah, it didn't come up specifically. My interpretation is different. I would take it that the improved parking space is not of agricultural use, and so it would be part of the home occupation business, but not part of the fifty percent. However.
I I would have probably gone with where Val went. That's probably how I would have taken it as well, based on.
As well.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Just as in an improved space, it's it's not very agriculturally.
There was an assumption that people had a driveway or something, you know, for somebody to be able to park in.
So clarification might be necessary here. I don't know, just throwing.
Well, we could, no, you could, we could, we could absolutely amend, a motion to make that recommendation could be amended here to the current motion if that was so chosen.
Yeah, I mean, if this is a big enough deal, we can, you know, we could get a motion, a second to amend it. I don't, I don't know that I see is that significant. That amount of space for a vehicle, but.
Yeah, it seems to me in line forty-five, it doesn't specifically state parking. It says all business activities, including compost stations, storage, et cetera, shall be located a minimum seventy from the property line. So there's room for interpretation there. I guess the question is whether it would be problematic for applicants.
Yeah, well, I I'll just take the, take the hypothetical farther. Could the individual park his or her tractors or farm gear or delivery vehicles out of the public easement outside of his property line, and therefore it's not part of the fifty percent of his, his, his own business space?
Well, you are, you're absolutely required to maintain your vehicles to what Jennifer, the ninety-six to a hundred, whatever there, you have, you can't just park your vehicles as your business on the street. That's not allowed. You have to have set aside space for it.
Yeah, line ninety-eight to ninety-nine is clear that trailers and work vehicles must be stored on an improved space.
Wait, and and there is history on that one, too, so where people were using the lawn and the backyard and everywhere else.
That's exactly why I bring it up. Okay, thank you. Good, so I'm glad to see it in black and white. Okay.
Okay, anything else? Any other discussion of this motion?
Just a thanks for the numerous iterations on this one. I think the code reads much cleaner than it did before, and some of the confusing language about shampoo and and cones is removed, so I I think it's much more suitable for today.
Do we still have the, we took the minks and chinchilla part of it out or whatever.
I don't know. I think that went into six, didn't it?
I think we took care of that one, but.
I don't know. I have to say personally, when I was interpreting that portion of code, I found that language helpful, but.
Yeah, there's, that goes back a lot of years before the city incorporated.
All right, hearing nothing else, we're going to move on to vote on the motion. We have the motion in a second. All fair, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 You post a nay. And the motion passes. Thank you, Jennifer. All right. Miscellaneous, we have with us, we will have a meeting next week, Tuesday, March first. We are, it's a workshop meeting, we're going to have the swearing in of our police chief, and we're going to bring Chief Homquest on right now, so you guys can ask him questions and see how it's going. But next week, Tuesday night, we look forward to swearing the chief in during our workshop meeting, so you all get to witness that.
You mean?
Chief, welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me this time?
Yes, yes, we can.
Good, all right. Apologize for not being in uniform. I forgot to bring my uniform home, so you got me in my, my rugged outlook.
Next, next week, next week, we'll see you looking at your best.
Dress blues.
You're undercover.
That's our other branch that we started, the people don't, oh, we weren't supposed to say anything about that.
Yeah, hush, you're not supposed to say.
Got a brand new undercover car today, I'll tell you. It's like the jet floor anyway.
Got a hemis.
A jet?
Yes.
I, was I speeding?
Nope, never.
All right, chief, let us know. Why don't you just update the council on what's been going on with the police department this week?
Absolutely. I've been working a lot on, as we had discussed earlier, on the vehicle leasing program. So I've been working on a PowerPoint to go over that with all of you at a future work study. So I've just been putting all these pieces together, and I'm going to go over with the mayor, Paula, just as a, as a first, second, third look, just to tune it up for you all.
But we've had, we've had our, excuse me, chief, we, how many vehicles, how many police vehicle failures did we have this week?
Uh, well, today, as of today, we had, well, we've had, we usually have two a day. So it's usually a battery problem or where the, or it's, one of them currently has two, number two, number four cylinder that isn't firing and and if it sits, sits too long like a run and speed radar and the officer goes to drive it away, there's a plume of smoke and there's no power, so. It's, it's a, it's a fragile fleet. I can just say that. So Steve's crew is very wonderful about me calling them every morning and saying, hey, we need a jump start, or, you know, we need to take it to this dealership or to this auto mechanic to to figure things out. But, so, yeah, so I am, I will be coming to you with a proposal, and I look forward to going over that with you. As far as hiring goes, our lieutenant position, he is progressing well, has his last two tests next week, and then it'll be ready for the mayor to look at his packet. I have a, excuse me, King County deputy that is in the process right now. He got let go for the vaccine, the vaccine mandate, so he is in process, and that was the same with the lieutenant position. He was let go for the mandate. So they're all in good standing, but got let go because of of that issue. So then I have one other, so that's two of the three positions. of that issue. So then I have, uh, one other, so that's, uh, two of the three positions. And I have one more position that I, uh, kind of forgot about in a way as far as like a contact that I had, but another victim of the mandate, uh, fish and wildlife officer that worked where I used to work. So he is going to come visit me on the twenty-third and I'm going to show him around, take him lunch, wine and dine him and get him to, uh, uh, pique interest into Briar. So, um, three very top notch candidates that we have in process right now. So I'm, I'm really excited about getting us to fully staffing and, uh, thanking the, the sheriff's department for their, their assistance, but also saying, so, um, but things are good. These are very good.
Things are good. Things are good. And I just wanted to compliment the chief, um, for this recruitment. That's obviously, you know, huge, uh, s- support from him knowing these people. And I'd like to report, um, our current officers, the two officers that have been with us, through thick and thin, um, are enjoying working for our new chief as well. And so that's also a good sign.
Oh, Martin. Yeah. Look, I, we don't have a policy on vaccine. I understand. And it's a hot topic. We haven't put a pass one in the Briar. It does seem, I, I just am a little concerned about how for a lot of students, so this is a really important topic and we haven't pushed it. But knowing, you know, and I, I somehow, chief, I have to trust you on this, but you know, the way some of the folks that refused to go, I questioned some of the judgment. I'll be perfectly honest on some of this. And I know that I could be at odds with peers on this council, but, and I'm not saying outright to say.
Right now you're at odds with me.
You're me too.
I'm just letting you know, if you're going to try to push a mandate at this.
I didn't, hey, hold on a second, guys. I get to speak. I have the floor. Okay. I didn't say I was asking for a mandate. I just wanted to speak my concern. I'm leaving it at that. I'm not asking for a mandate. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else?
And just for clarification, Martin, I was speaking in general terms when I said, if you, speaking to, if somebody wants to institute a mandate at this point, and this is in my opinion, um, you're going to see tremendous pushback.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, there, there, it, there could be an issue, however. Do we know if, uh, our staff is vaccinated? The reason I say that is.
Anyone's business.
Yeah, well, th- there could be a perception issue with the public. And I, and again, I'm not a, a mandate person either, but, uh, we might want to, a- and I thought that's where Martin was going. Do we, do we need
That's the concern.
Regarding any major, that we are being extremely cautious and all that kind of stuff. So anyway, it's a potential, uh, issue.
Just real quick to touch on this, as of right now, the ci- city of Seattle have eight hundred and eighty deployable police officers. When their minimum target should be fifteen hundred, city of Boston, which is a comp city to Seattle, has nineteen hundred and they're short. The city of Seattle should be a two thousand police officers and their staff eight hundred eighty deployable. Now, when you say deployable, chief, back me up. That doesn't mean that they actually they could be on maternity leave, correct, chief? So deployable is a pretty loose definition.
It's very true.
Fine. False equivalency. That's not the point.
Whatever. All I know is I put my trust in the chief. That's why.
Our responsibility is to keep our citizens safe, period.
Absolutely. And anyway, oh, I'm going to leave it at that.
All right. Anything else, chief?
I have, I have nothing.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Val.
Um, I have some minor concern regarding the number of possible public facing employees who may be vulnerable to illness regarding staffing issues. Um, if there is a lack of vaccination and there is a breakout, I would be concerned regarding available deployable staff. Um, were, were we to have a sickness go around the department? So I'm going to voice my concern on that side. Um, as far as specifically recruiting available officers because they are available, because they have, um, been a victim of mandates in other cities. So just maintaining protocol if there is, um, a spike and being very careful also in our interactions with public, knowing that we could have potential weakness in that area.
I, I respect that very much. Um, I know that our protocols are is that we, we wear a mask, um, when we're six feet uh, from somebody or within fifteen minutes of people where the officers are directed when they're on calls for service to wear their masks. Uh, traffic stops are something that is, I do not require them to wear a mask when they approach the vehicle because oftentimes, uh, they're, that, that, those are, those are very high dangerous situations. So, some people think that traffic stops aren't. It's just like, oh, I'm just pulling over a speeder. But most officers get shot or somehow very much injured just by walking up to a car because they don't know it. So, um, I don't require them to wear their mask when they walk up to the car. Um, once they deem that it's a normal traffic stop, they can, they, they put it on. But it's, it kind of, it comes down to the fact of being able to, uh, effectively communicate with people because we all know the mask can, can kind of bumble what we're saying, right? So, uh, on calls like that or, or high priority calls, I don't require a mask because that's when you really want them to hear every instruction that an officer is giving them. So we are, we are, we do have safety protocols. I've only been there a month. We haven't had any issues. Uh, my understanding is we haven't had any, within the department, any, um, sicknesses. So we're, we're doing the best that we can in the times that we're in. So, but I, I respect every one of yours, everybody's, um, uh, what they're saying. I hear you. And we're doing everything that we can to keep the citizens and officers safe.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for the chief? All right. Thank you, chief. Any, any other miscellaneous call of council members?
Yeah, actually, uh, we do have one little thing. We did get all the final stuff back, actually just a little bit before this council meeting. Saturday on the branding, if people want to see a quick look through.
Yeah.
If people are interested.
I got it.
All right. It's all up there. All right. So this, I think it had all the different pieces, but we'll just kind of go through and then we'll send it out to people. These are not, we also have all the ones for generating. This is just the PDF of it, but all the artwork and stuff that actually goes into generating these things. So you can make them scalable and all that, uh, we also received. So here is the base horizontal logo everybody talked about and dialed in. So, um, pretty much where you folks saw that, uh, the other week, uh, let's keep going. And then we, and then this is a vertical example. If you put the naming underneath, uh, obviously. Yeah, we can go. And then just if you, we go name only. And then I think the next ones are kind of the variations then for folks. So the black and white, so a little bit of a grayscale, but, uh, again, uh, one of the things I liked on this, on the black and white, it, the original kind of example we got was a little too cartoony. Uh, Val, you'll notice the bottom one here is the ask you had uh, on that. And then here's one that you can see kind of that reverse print. And then this is the, so if we were going to engrave on signs, this is how the engravings would go. Right? So, you know, I put all the colors, uh, in there with the houses and all that, uh, and then everything else is.
Colors and just go with this one. I really like it. I think it looks really super sharp.
To be honest, the color stuff will, would only really be on stuff probably more with the websites, maybe if people were doing bad patches or something like that, uh, and, and all that. But most all the letterhead and stuff would probably be this one. Uh, the rest is all the branding fonts, which I don't know anybody cares and all the exact color names and stuff down below. But that is, oh, and then these are just, uh, these, we wouldn't actually use this way, but if we were to say, oh, let's brand to the different, uh, departments or something, this is just kind of example, but, uh, obviously we don't have our own fire department. So, as we know. So that is that, um, Paula will send it out to everybody so you can have that. And, uh,
I really like that, that black, that, that one is, it's just by taking all the, I mean, I didn't think I would like something that had no color, but seeing that with the color removed, it, it's just, it's so sharp.
All right. Thank you, Martin. So Paula will send those out. Um, speaking of fire department, you got a lot of information, um, from, uh, potential South County Fire Region RFA discussion last week at the workshop. I continue to have discussions and learn more about, um, that opportunity. If you have specific questions, uh, please forward them on to me so that I can try to get answers for you. We may need to have further workshops to discuss because it isn't, it is a very important thing. There's a lot of information and it's hard to absorb at all. So, but if you have specific questions about the, the, the RFA proposal or the information that you feel that you need, uh, please let me know and I'll do my best to get answers. Giving them to me and writing via emails best. All right.
I have one.
Yes.
I have two things actually. I have a, a question which we can take offline if that's better, but, um, has Briar ever had a transportation benefit tax?
No.
Okay. There's legislation about that. And so I was curious how much it would impact us.
No, we, we talked about it years ago, um, but we kind of let other people take it for a trial run. And after getting feedback from other places and how all that was going, um, we opted not to, you know, plus of course you have to remember, if it says transportation benefit district, um, you have to jump through all the hoops for the only stuff that you can use it for. If, it, it has all those attachments like.
It sounded gnarly. So I was thinking we probably, it was beyond our administrative desires.
Well, and the other part that was really bad with it to begin with, and I think they may have fixed that, but, um, it has to be reported as a totally separate entity. So I have to do a separate set of books for it from everything else we do. And I have to do an entire annual report for it. And I would have to do a separate budget for it. And so, yeah, we, we just, we went.
Okay. Thank you. That was my guess, but I wanted to switch on that. And then the second issue, and I don't know if I need a formal motion around this, um, please advise. But, uh, we are, I would be quite interested in learning more about, um, this proposal about the tree canopy for, uh, Snohomish County. Um, there is proposed policy changes that we as a city could, um, endorse. And my particular interest in this matter would be, uh, what the possible impacts could be to the municipal urban growth areas, um, to the north and to the east of Briar. There are forested areas there, and I'm curious if changes to policy at the county level could have some positive impact on the development in those areas. And I've done a lot of research, but it would be really helpful to me to get more information, um, from county sources. And I wanted to bring that forth to see if we could look at a workshop on that.
Yeah. And if you want to bring it forward, Val, because it's been brought up a couple of times. This is what I was bringing up at last week's meeting. If you want to make a motion that you'd like to bring a proposal and everything forward, you get yourself the second. And then because of the fact that everyone has not jumped out and gone, yeah.
Right. I understand. Yeah.
We, we get your vote and, and then that determines if it moves forward.
But now just correcting, I'm ro- missing something, Val. You're asking for just somebody to come in and talk a bit more about it. Is that, that's what you're asking for, not a motion right now, right?
Well, no, a motion to put it, to bring it forward on a future agenda, Martin.
All right.
Right. Okay. So that, because there has not been overwhelming
Formality.
Interest when she's brought it up.
So, okay. I would like to move that we add to a future workshop agenda, the presentation of additional information regarding current and upcoming tree canopy policies and how they affect the municipal urban growth areas adjacent to Briar.
I will second, second that motion.
Um, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion of the motion?
I, I'm intrigued to learn more, Val. Definitely. Uh, after reading the League of Women voter statement and the background materials, uh, again, dating back to nineteen ninety-one. There's a hypothesis put in that letter for endorsement that in fact, I think is not borne out by the, the county's own data from its, uh, Snohomish County Planning and Development Services. So it would be very, very instructive to sort of tease out the facts from, from the, the folks who have all the data. So I, I would look forward to that workshop meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion, any other discussions of the motion?
And so this would be a, a presentation on activities that is, that really are happening outside of Briar, but on our borders. So, so kind of informational presentation?
Mostly, um, our citizens were affected greatly and still continue to be regarding the development on Barker Atlas. And I'm curious if we can find out more about the criteria that, um, permitted that level of density and the degree of tree removal that happened in support of that. And I'm curious if, um, if we had more information around existing county policy, if Briar's vote, should it be taken into consideration by our county council member, um, if that would shift how things were done on Briar, on Barker Atlas for future developments?
Okay. Yeah, we do, we do comment, you know, on the developments that are near, adjacent to our city. We actually did comment on that development. Um, for the record, staff and our engineer, we commented a couple of times. We didn't get any response. The county basically tells us, this is our, we're following our, our own ordinances. And we're sorry, you know, basically just ignore us, but it wouldn't hurt to find out and, um, to get more information in a, in a workshop meeting. So that's fine. All right. Any other discussion of the motion? Hearing that, all of you have the motion signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the motion? Say nay. All right. The motion passes. All right. Anything else miscellaneous? All right. Moving on to auditing of accounts, Mr. Gallagher.
Where is my button here? Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the February twenty twenty-two claim checks, number four, three, four, five, two through number four, three, four, nine, two, and the amount of one hundred forty thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-six cents.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Gallagher, a second by Lockhart. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing that, all of you have the motion, think of what I was saying, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All you, any opposed, say nay? And the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned and we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thanks.
Good night.
Looking forward to the ceremony next time.